Good evening, everyone. This is the regular meeting of the Southfield City Council, May 19th. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Thank you, Council President. Councilwoman Banks is absent with notice. Councilman Brightwell. Councilman Cruz. Councilwoman Haynes.
Present.
Council Pro Tem Hicks is absent with notice. Councilwoman Hoag.
Here.
Council President Mandabaugh.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Can everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have one presentation this evening.
Is anybody here from Moms Demand Action or Stop Gun Violence? I don't see anybody. They were notified. Anyhow, we have a resolution. It's a joint resolution, mayor and council, Wear Orange National Gun Violence Awareness Day, June 6th, 2025. Whereas Hadea Pendleton, a high school student from the south side of Chicago, was shot and killed in Chicago at the age of 15, just one week after performing in President Barack Obama's second inaugural parade in 2013. Whereas, after Hadea Pendleton's death, her childhood friends chose to commemorate her life by wearing orange, the color hunters wear, to protect themselves and others. And whereas, on June 2015, thousands of Americans wear orange to speak out and honor Hadea Pendleton's and the scores of people whose lives were cut short and the hundreds wounded by gun violence daily. And whereas, National Gun Violence Awareness Day is observed nationally on the first Friday in June and the following weekend each year to promote awareness and educate people about gun violence in America. And whereas, nationwide, partners such as the Brady Campaign to Prevent Gun Violence, Moms Demand Action for Gun Sense in America, Gun Owners for Responsible Ownership, MyBrothersKeeper, MoveOn.org, the National PTA Sandy Hook Promise, and locally, the Detroit Area Disarmory Ministries, which is centered in Southfield, at St. David's Church, Episcopal Church on 12 Mile, are working hard every day to build a future where Americans can live free from gun violence. And whereas, the 8th National Gun Violence Awareness Day will fall on June 6th, 2025, more than 150 key buildings and landmarks nationwide will turn orange in support of Wear Orange National Gun Violence Awareness Day to show their support for a future free from gun violence. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and the city councils, city of Southfield, county of Oakland, state of Michigan do hereby proclaim June 6th, 2025, as National Wear Orange Gun Violence Awareness Day in the city of Southfield. Encourage residents and businesses in Southfield to light their city orange to show their support for and to end gun violence. We will be lighting the front of our building in orange for our participation in this. Again, I don't see Mrs. Street and Susan Gayton. They're not here. They were notified. So, council, this is a joint resolution. If you favor this, I ask for a motion to approve.
Mr. President. I move that we approve the resolution as stated by the mayor to proclaim June 6th, 2025, as Wear Orange National Gun Violence Awareness Day.
Support.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Hoag, supported by Councilwoman Haynes, to approve the joint resolution of Wear Orange National Gun Violence Awareness Day for June 6th, 2025. Any questions? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next we are up to our communications portion of the meeting. The Southfield City Council has established the following rules of procedure for all speakers. No speaker may make personal or impromptu attacks upon an officer, employee, or city council member, or other elected official that is unrelated to the manner in which the officer, employee, or city council member, or other elected official performs his or her duties. No person shall use abusive or threatening language towards any individual when addressing the city council. Any person who violates this section shall be directed by the presiding officer to be orderly and silent. If a person addressing the council refuses to become silent when so directed, such person may be deemed by the presiding officer to have committed a breach of the peace by disrupting and impeding the orderly conduct of the public meeting of the city council, and may be ordered by the presiding officer to leave the meeting. If the person refuses to leave as directed, the presiding officer may direct any law enforcement officer who is present to escort the violator from the meeting. The council may not provide responses to public comment during the meeting. If you have provided your contact information when you signed up for public communications, the city will provide a more formal response to you in the near future, should it be warranted. Any response to public comment will happen after all communications have been completed. Each speaker will have three minutes. We ask that you give respect to each speaker. Our first speaker is Chris Mayberger. And I just, I see why you've signed up. I just want to remind you about the letter about the supplemental RFP process.
Well, with respects to that, this is a, it states items to be discussed. Is this a item that can be discussed upon when it's in the agenda? Or do I need to take advantage of my three minutes now?
So, well, we want to make sure it's just to protect your rights. You have a right to speak, but I know that there hasn't been an approval of the bid yet. So, we want to make sure that there's no, that there's full transparency, and that if comments are made about something related to that bid and it hasn't been approved yet, we want to make sure that everybody's abiding by that, so it doesn't affect the parties such as yourself involved.
Okay.
But it's your decision to speak.
Okay, I'll surrender my three minutes.
Okay.
Play out. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Imari Kenyatta.
I have a copy for each councilman.
So, you would give that to the city clerk.
How many you need? For all of them? Oh, all of them, yeah. How many you need? How many do you need? Okay, give me the rest back. Give me the rest back if there's extra.
I'm representing the residents of the community where we have a flood situation that's been ongoing since 1990. And I just wanted to address that.
Can you speak louder, please?
I'm representing the residents of a flood area that has been ongoing since 1990 and getting worse. And I passed that out so that you could reference it later, because you're not going to be able to read it now. Can I get three and a half minutes, please?
I'm sorry.
Okay, I can cover it in three minutes. So, I'll state, I'll just state what's in section one and two, and then I'll jump to the end of section, part three.
Okay.
Part one speaks to the impact on the residents and the condition of the drainage system, also the opposing positions by the residents versus the city as to who should pay for it. And this has been ongoing since 1990. Meanwhile, the conditions are growing, or better stated, have already grown out of control. Part two covers our more recent attempts to solve this issue, which began in August last year. It speaks to meetings with the city council, our organizing efforts, and our attempts to contact selected city officials. The Public Works Director did provide us with some historical documentation from back then, and our FOI R also provided additional documentation primarily from the Treasurer's Office. Part three of the document tells what we have done already. I'm just going to skip to and read the last paragraph. In terms of homeowners reimbursing the city for the work to be done, it either has to be an escrow agreement similar to the one, or the same as the one, that was done in 1990 for the very similar reason, or work out something around property taxes. I know a number of the homeowners are willing to pay the whole amount of their share upfront. This item is of particular concern and is important since it involves coordination between Public Works Treasurer's Office and the City Attorney's Office, and ultimately, those three meeting with the homeowners. We need this meeting to understand the proposed payment plan, any questions we need answered, and provide any input we may have. This meeting has slipped from around the end of February to sometime in April, and the last date was last week. We do not have a date for a meeting yet. This is not a criticism. The Public Works Director has been very helpful in probably doing what he can with his allocation of time and responsibilities. Since coordination is required between three different city entities, perhaps the council via the city administrator could assist in concluding this matter by updating the priority and oversight. That's what we're requesting. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
All right.
Our next speaker is Yolanda Greer.
Good evening, councilman, mayor, clerk. Thank you for this opportunity. Actually, when I signed in, I thought I was just supposed to sign in. I haven't been in this room in many, many years. So, it's good to be back. But I just want to say to our mayor, to our council people, and our clerk, I want you to do what's best for every resident here in the city of Southfield, Michigan. I think we're doing a great job, but I know we all, as a whole, can do better. So, let's do better to make Southfield the number one city in the United States of America. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, our next speaker is Trina Scott.
Good evening, council, and all elected officials, and Mr. Mayor. I'm here again to talk about the issues in our neighborhood last night, just exemplified what the mayor talked about in terms of gun violence and everything. We had gunshots in our neighborhood last night. And I don't think it should take for an incident to happen, or things to happen, to have our council come out and at least see what's happening in our community. Council President, I appreciate you driving through our community, but it would be very helpful if all of our elected officials spent some time in the neighborhood. I've never, in my seven years and over 30 years of living in Southfield, seen one elected official in my community come out and have conversation with the residents. Secondly, I provided pictures again of Matriarch, where the grass is not cut, and also where the apartment complex continues to have garbage that overflows. I understand from Council President, as he responded, that code enforcement is there, and I'm appreciative that we are trying to use code enforcement, but we need more than just citing codes. We need action. I appreciate that someone has come out and put markings on the ground in our neighborhood to show that at least there is some progress with the flooding that is occurring on the corner of Matrot and Primary Drive, but more needs to be done. And I would just really encourage all of you to come out and talk to us in our community. I think it was Councilwoman Hayes that said, "Go out and talk to your neighbors." I would say that that's a great advice, and I've done that, not just because I've been here, but since I've been in my neighborhood. And my neighborhood, neighbors have the same sentiment. We have several women who are single, who are very afraid. Then I shared pictures and text messages with you all last week via email, that there are issues in our community. We continue to see people walking around our community at all times of the night, and they're captured on our Ring videos. We want action. I will be here every week, hopefully, with nothing that happens, but last night was shocking as my daughter was preparing for her finals that started today, to hear the gunshot, of which a gun violence did happen in our community in 2020 on December 27th. And so, I'm just trying to say, please, instead of just giving us lip service, please come to the community and talk to us, hear what we have to say, and help with solutions other than citing policy. Thank you.
Thank you. And that concludes our communications portion for this evening. The first speaker, the council is well aware of this issue. This is a, just for some background, because I want people to understand what the city has done for this part of the neighborhood. They have a private drainage system, and the city has been working with them, helping them try to come up with a solution. And we're at a point where we have to, we're at the legal point where we have to come up with some type of escrow account and legal agreements, because the city's going to be helping them, but the residents will be paying for it. I'm going to ask our Public Works Director if you can update us. I know that, I think you got a copy of what we were given. And, you know, just for the record, this is, this is an issue, I think, from before any of us were here. This goes back, I think, to the early 90s. But the city has worked with the neighborhood on engineering drawings, cost-sharing proposals, and now we're just trying to get to what the resident was saying is the escrow agreement back from 1990 to do something similar, and that's where there seems to be a little bit of a struggle.
Yes, so, good evening, council. So, this, the 90s was the first fix that the city tried to do here. This problem's been going on even before that, since the subdivision was first developed, maybe in the 70s. I don't recall the exact timeframe, but the 90s is the first time that the city facilitated some work in this, to remedy the problem. And it didn't, it didn't seem to help too much. Now, in this case, we're, we've engineered a, what we feel is a more permanent solution. If we were to go through the SAD process, we would have to take on the infrastructure and future maintenance of the infrastructure. We don't want to go that route. There is a portion of this solution that is public. We will be doing that work. We're asking the residents here to perform the work, the private portion of the work, with the design that we've prepared for them, right? And that's where, again, the legal departments and Treasury, you know, and Treasury and all those come in as far as, there's a couple of different ways to go through, you know, should the city facility set up an escrow like we did last time? And, you know, sort of act as a mediator between the multiple residents? Or do we just let their HOA deal with the finances and how that? So, that's all stuff that we have to hash out internally first, and that's the meeting that keeps slipping. It's something that we need to schedule, so.
Can we, is there a way that we can, I guess, get a date? The meeting will be conducted by specific time, or at least have, at least have one of the meetings? I know it's not, it may not be solved.
I would say the meeting probably beginning of June. I know our city engineer is at a conference this week. I would like her to be there.
Okay. Okay, thank you. And don't go away. Our next, our next speaker, Ms. Scott, also came, and there's markings on the street. I know that you were out there trying to figure out that drainage issue.
Yes.
Can you update us?
So, we have received a survey. I'm looking at it to determine the solution. It's a little tricky the way the drive was, or the drive approach was constructed. We might have to, I have to see if we can get a mini-mill from one of our contractors and maybe mill around. There's, there's a low point away from the catch basin, basically. We just need to regrade. It's tough to regrade concrete, right? So, the ditch that was dug out there, there's a, it, there's a low point there in the ditch, which, again, if we just fix the concrete, we shouldn't need to do anything with the ditch. We, we'll just cover it back up the way it was with normal, you know, green landscape, green area there.
Okay. Thank you. And then the other issues that Ms. Scott brought up were, and based on the pictures, you know, garbage by the apartment complex and things like that, that, you know, our code enforcement department is working on that. I know that, you know, there's a process to follow. Sometimes it takes longer than residents would like, but we do have to follow some of those processes. Even with the grass mowing along the street, if it takes too long and they don't respond, the city will go out and mow the lawn or the grass for those properties, and unfortunately, then they, those property owners will get stuck with a very hefty bill when the city comes out to mow. But I will follow up with our code enforcement director. I know that she has been through that neighborhood, citing the apartment complex, as well as several homes and some of the grassy areas. We are on top of it. Councilwoman Hoag, you had another comment?
I did, too, Ms. Scott. You mentioned about hearing from the president. Many of us took a drive through your neighborhood. There's just a way that we communicate with our residents so that you don't get many and multiple emails from all of us. It would appear that you're not hearing from all, but we all work together. There were at least three or four of us, I believe, went through your neighborhood. Additionally, I am chair of the Neighborhood Committee, for which I brought the Code Enforcement Director to the meeting to address your issues specifically, on the garbage, the grass cutting. So, there's a lot going on that you may not be aware, and it's not just the president's, there's others. And thirdly, as far as coming out to the neighborhood, a lot of us are willing to come, but we sometimes get pushback from some, especially during an election year that they think you're only coming out for that. You can reach out to us, give us your next meeting, and I'll certainly be there if I'm able to. I will certainly come. But we did address all of your issues at our last neighborhood meeting, and I'll share with you the next one, that you could come, and it's a more intimate setting where you could speak more, we can talk about solutions and things of that such. But we certainly did talk and did more than just listening to your issues. And again, there were at least three people that I know drove through your neighborhood, and we do that often. But we have a protocol on how we respond to residents. That is left to our mayor or our president, so that you don't have everyone, but we're all aware of it, and we know what is communicated back to you, and then we communicate with each other as well. Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Haynes?
Yes, I'd like to add to that. I understand your concern, and what I do like is your commitment to your neighborhood. And, you know, I spoke earlier about, at the last meeting, about some of the things we did in our neighborhood. I want to impress upon you to get in touch with Chief Barron. We make calls. When we see anything that is out of order, out of line, you make calls. Tell your neighbors to call. If it's somebody walking down the street that looks suspicious, or walking in someone's backyard, or whatever, make the call. Even make the call to each other. Not only that, capture these pictures on your Ring. My neighbor and I, we used to take pictures and ask, "Do you know who this person is walking down the street?" Because we've had some incidents as well. But I'm encouraging you to call him. There is also, the police department can come and do security checks on neighbors, on your neighbors or your residents to make sure things are fine. That is very, very important, especially for single mothers that are in fear, or that feel like someone's going to come to their home. I can tell you more, but I won't belabor on the part about Chief Barron, but get in touch with him. The community policing will come out in your neighborhood. If your neighborhood association is having an event, they will come out there. That is a way to get to know them. Sometimes people are living in fear because of the unknown, or maybe because of something that happened. I'm sorry about what happened in 2020, but this is 2025, and we have an excellent police department that comes when you, sometimes when you put the phone down there, there. And I'm not just saying that. So, I would really encourage you to do that as well. Also, we have services here at the city for single mothers. We have the human services. Ms. Rhonda Terry is involved if there's a need for something that they have. Sometimes when I go out and talk with people in the community, I find out they don't know about a lot of the services we offer. I used to be a part of Youth Assistance. Youth Assistance have a camp, has a camp program for young kids that these single mothers can put their kids in. They get scholarships. Sometimes that encourages kids to stay off the streets or have, let them become involved. We have several programs that can help these parents get their kids involved, even at the library, the Optimist Club, I can go on. And again, like she said about the neighborhoods, we have been told, at least I was, that it was a way that the neighborhood associations are not encouraged to have all of us to attend their meetings. Well, I think that's something that's not good, and if that's the case, however it goes, it needs to be changed, because I would come at any time to talk about some of these things, and I think all of us up here will do the same thing. We want to be in the community. We are part of this community. I don't do just lip service. When I leave here at nighttime, I drive the neighborhood by myself sometimes. I drive the neighborhoods because I want to see what's going on. I want my community to be better. This is why I came to this position that I'm in. I was doing this before I got on the council, and I will continue to do this, God willing. If I'm on it again, and if I'm not, I'll still do it. And I'm not just saying that. People that know me and us up here, this is what we want to do. We want to help. We want to be there for you, and if it's any way you want to sit down and, let's talk about this. You know, let's, I know you're going to come here, and I don't have a problem with you coming here, but let's not just talk about the problem, let's find solutions. Let's find solutions together. And that's all I'd like to say. Thank you.
Councilman Brightwell?
In answer to that, echo my colleague's comments, and I hope that the sincerity of my colleagues has come through and that we are looking for, you know, resolutions. So, and I will not belabor the point, but I think the comments that are made indicate the sincerity of the council of resolving this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're next up to the, we have one set of minutes to approve.
Mr. President.
Yes.
I move that we approve the committee of the whole meeting minutes for March 10th, 2025.
Support.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Hoag, supported by Councilwoman Haynes, to approve the committee of the whole minutes of March 10th, 2025. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next is our consent agenda. Consent agenda items are considered routine, non-controversial, or have previously been discussed. Does any member of the council have any items they wish polled?
I'd like to have item C polled.
Any other items? All right, I will ask our new fire chief, who started today, to come up with the, with Deputy Macias and Nicole, our purchasing director. And why don't you ask your question while they are coming up?
During the construction, the first question is, will the firehouse be shut down?
Station five, not that I'm aware of. No, the fire station won't be shut down. For the kitchen during this construction? No.
Yeah, okay. Okay.
Okay, well, I think I understand. You will work around the construction, so you, your staff will con- you will serve as a full-time station?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, we've given them other means of, of cooking, and we've already worked through this process once, so, and kept the station open. And so Station Five will be open during the period of construction to the kitchen.
All right. Um, looking at, looking at the the volume, the, the money involved per, per bid, why, why we have, I'm assuming, and this is something that, that, that sort of all my career, whenever I saw this kind of disparity in bids, I, I would always ask, you know, why, why we have this disparity in bids? When both, everybody, I'm assuming they're in the same line of work. They know what they have to do. So it is just historically, this is always indicated to me. This is why I bring it up. Uh, I know there's maybe what, there's always been some reason that there's a hundred thousand dollar difference in the lower bid and the next bid. It, it's just, um, so explain to me why we have this disparity in bidding.
Good evening, council. So in this particular case, if you'll notice, there was one company that we could not include in this process because they did not meet all of the qualifications. They were substantially lower. During the bid walkthrough, all companies were advised that the budget for this project was a hundred thousand dollars. We were advised by certain companies that they felt they weren't sure if they were going to be able to do it for the hundred thousand dollars. And they explained that to us, and we were grateful for their explanation. We have met with this company, Decima, and we had a sit-down discussion regarding, one, the amount of money, and two, the time. And they explained to us that they have several components that are actually, their electrician, I believe their mechanical, are all in-house. They're not going to have to hire another company to come in, which cuts down on a lot of the costs. Where a lot of other companies will have to bring someone in, and that's going to add to their costs. The Decima hasn't, they have three of them actually with their company already.
Okay, have we used these people before?
We actually do use them for our electrical. I'm going to be honest with you. We do use them for our electrical.
Okay. Okay, um. There. So I'm just, in your, in your opinion, there's, there's ample reason why there's that discrep- you know, discrepancy in the bid and that this company can perform this job adequately at the stated price that we are accepting, at the stated bid.
Yes, sir. And this bid was very specific. We made sure that in this bid, we stated exactly what the firehouse was looking for. When it came to the countertops, when it came to the appliances, the lighting, everything was very specific. So if you could not, or you may know another company, but you may not be able to get it right then and there, that may be. But this was not a bid where we just said, design it. No, we worked with the fire department to be very specific what they were looking for for this, for this kitchen.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. I appreciate your explanation. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes?
I move that we approve consent agenda item A, authorization to purchase a replacement vehicle for the police department. B, receipt of bids for road reconstruction and water main replacement along Mount Vernon from Northwestern to Southfield. Receipt of proposals for Fire Station Five Kitchen renovation project. D, proposed contract for the purchase of janitorial supplies. E, five-door access pad replacement. F, authorization to accept fiscal year 2025 Oakland Board of Commissioners' general funds sponsorship for the Ninth Annual 2025 City of Southfield Community Cup Challenge. And G, request public hearing date for the CBD, CDBG Community Development Block Grant annual action plan for five years.
All right. It has been moved by Councilwoman Hoag, supported by Councilwoman Brightwell, to approve consent agenda items A through G. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. And again, I'd like to welcome our new fire chief. Um, his first day on the job. Welcome. We're glad you're here.
Welcome.
And you show up, and all of a sudden we approve a new kitchen, so.
Here by the state of the fire station.
Also, I want to point out on our, um, one of the things we just approved is reconstruction along Mount Vernon and between Northwestern and Southfield Road. Um, this is, anyone who's driven that road knows that it needs to be reconstructed. But the nice thing about it is this is a four million dollar project that we received a four million dollar grant from the state to do the work. So that does not come out of any of the Southfield taxpayer money. So whenever we can, we try to use grants from the state, from the feds, from the county to try to get these road construction projects done. All right. Our next item is um, the receipt of proposals for the vehicle towing and storage services. And I will ask our purchasing director to go through this with us, please.
Good evening. Tonight, the purchasing department would like to present the proposal for vehicle towing and storage services. On March 13th, 2025, the purchasing department received bids to establish a contract pricing for vehicle towing and storage services for the City of Southfield. The successful company is required to maintain the facility within the City of Southfield limits with zoning appropriate for storage space and security within the city limits. Two companies responded, Larry Ross Garage, doing business as Ross Towing, and Quality Towing. Both are within the City of Southfield. Based on the grading system that was presented to council and utilized by the purchasing department, we evaluated multiple aspects of each company. Quality Towing received more total points and therefore may be awarded the contract. Upon entering this contract, the city will continue to provide vehicle, be provided with vehicle and pound facility for the following services: removal of abandoned and accident-damaged vehicles from city streets, cleaning accident debris from the roadway, and storing vehicles at a secure facility until redeemed by the owner or sold at auction. Fiscal impact, there are no direct costs associated with this contract to the city. It is our recommendation that the city council authorize the mayor and the clerk to execute a two-year contract with up to a two-one-year contract extension option with Quality Towing for the period of May 19th, 2025 through May 18th, 2027. The contract will be executed once all code and zoning infractions that have been discovered have been corrected. Quality will have 120 days to correct these violations. If the violations are not corrected, the bid process will be re-reviewed. Any questions?
Councilwoman Haynes?
Yes, I do have some questions. Was there any time, um, any of the con- people that Quality or Ross had some things they had to work on in order to get the contract approved? Or is it, is, is that presently happening now?
That is presently working on now. We did not res- discover that the violations occurred until after the bid opening occurred. Then we found out that there were some violations.
Okay. Can you explain to me some of those violations, please?
Yes, ma'am. Okay, for under code enforcement, we have potholes in the parking lot and faded striping in the south parking lot, a broken light fixture in the north parking lot for 21340 telegraph.
Is this, this is, can you tell us which?
Yes, okay. So the first one is going to be for 21340, and I believe that is, that's Ross. Okay. So that is potholes in the parking lot, faded striping in the south parking lot, a broken light fixture in the north parking lot. And I believe Ross also has 21348 telegraph? Okay. So then I have 21504, which is Quality, faded striping in the parking lot. These are code violations.
Faded striping is in the parking lot?
Yes, ma'am. Now, Planning went out, and I have an email here from April 30th from Planning. And for Quality Towing, I have that the last approved traffic and parking plan on their file was dated 3/7/1969. I have the details of the plan are very basic. They have a chain-link fence in the rear lot that is in disrepair. Based on the code, uh, based on zoning today, either a 50-foot green belt buffer need, is needed or a brick wall is required between industrial and residential. The existing parking spaces and drive aisles do not match the approved plan. And one eastern fire hydrant shown on the plan is missing or in the wrong location. Another, a western fire hydrant location does not match the plans. The existing barrier-free space is not compliant with the current standards, and that is all for Quality.
Okay, that's a current inspection, you're saying?
Yes.
That was a recent inspect- what date was that?
That, I just received the email on April 30th, 2025.
Okay, so prior to that, um, you're saying that a complaint was made, so then they were?
No, not a complaint.
Not a complaint?
No.
An inspection was made by the city?
Yes.
Prior to them submitting the bid?
No, ma'am.
After they submitted?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, why wasn't it made prior?
It is my understanding that we did send code out, and our code went out. No, code went out after April 2 as well. It is our understanding that normally this should have been something that was kept up to date. But I'm going to be honest. I also did some research. There are some things that were not done between the agreement in '22 and now. I'm going to be honest with you.
Okay, so the agreement that they had with the city, they had some things not being done?
Yes.
And they got, and there was no inspection done, and they got to bid. And, okay, do we see something?
You, you ask your questions?
I ask questions. Thank you.
Okay.
Any other? Councilwoman Hoag, do you have any questions?
Yeah, let me, let me just ask. Is it customary that we give someone a contract that has violations? And um, I, I made any violations, and, and, and I, I don't know the severity from a, I know the spoken word from a severity standpoint, but I don't know the severity from the standpoint of actually the functioning of that activity. So, uh, just explain to me just why, why we have a custom, or is it a custom that we approve contracts when there are violations here?
No, that is why I'm asking that if they do not fix these violations, this contract will not be issued. We will have to go back out to bid. Like I stated, in '22, I'm not sure what happened, but I'm pretty sure these, some of these violations, they were there in '22. They were still issued a contract. I am bringing it up now, saying, let's, let's resolve this. If not, then we're going to have to re-review this, the possibility of going back out to bid.
Okay, so does this, does life go on until we go back out and inspect us? So e- everything is stopped now, or?
No, everything has not stopped yet.
So the life is?
Life is still going on, sir.
Okay. And what is the proposed re-inspection date?
So it's my understanding they are, yes, sir.
So Quality Towing has contacted our office, and we have a meeting set up to review their outstanding items. And this could be addressed administratively. So, um, that meeting's scheduled, I believe, within the next week. They did reach out to us regarding their outstanding site plan issues.
Councilwoman Hoag?
Thank you, madam. Purchasing agent. Um, you said that these issues were existing prior?
Some of these, especially if you look at, when they're talking about the last approved plan, for Quality is 1969, the last one for Ross is 2007. I, I didn't even get a chance to go over with you with Ross.
And, and that's actually the issue that I have. I think that further discussion with us is needed. And I move that we table this to a, a date uncertain, just so that, because I have some questions that I think
Yes, and that's for.
we should, um, present to you. I don't think it's fair to you, and, um, I think we should just talk about some things a little bit further.
Yes, ma'am.
And I think we could, you know, get it resolved at one of the ne- I won't give a date, but I think we can discuss it at, um, even at our cow, and we could just take immediate action if needed. But I think, uh, one, it needs to postpone so that we, because I have some questions that I feel better to present those to you and just give more time than what we have. Secondly, I know that some of our colleagues, even though they're not here today, they had a excused absence, and, um, they had some issues as well. So I think just to be fair to all, I think it makes sense to just table this.
So.
To a date uncertain.
Right, so Councilwoman Ho touched on it. I, I did receive some calls from some of the other council members who had questions as well. And we, I think it does make sense to bring this back to a, a committee of a whole to get some of these issues worked out. But one question that I would ask, and this would, this would apply, I guess, to, to both those who responded in the RFP, is there's, there's, it seems that there's violations from, from, or not necessarily violations, but things that need to be fixed for the site plan for, for both respondents. So the question becomes, if those violations are fixed or remediated, would that change the scoring? Is the first part of the question. The second part of the question is, how did we get this far with these violations out there? Again, I'm not, I'm not looking for an answer now. I know we're putting you on the spot. But that's why I think that those are some of the questions I received from, from some of our council that are here now and that are not here, um, because they did have an excused absence. But, um, I know there's, as Councilwoman Hoax, I think it just warrants some additional conversation with, with the council. But I know the city administrator's looking at me like he wants to add some.
First, it's, it's a question.
Is your mic on?
Yes.
Okay.
It's a question of timing. These violations did not exist when the site plan was approved. So i- it's, it's like a house built in 1960, and then comparing it to 2025 standards. That's where, where the violations are coming from. It wasn't standard, but because the contract is with the city, they're reapplying and taking a second look at these and using the new, whatever the new zoning and planning requirements. You know, I, I have some concerns about that. I mean, a site plan's approved, and, and, and I think we need to be real careful there. Uh, the other item is the contract, the current contract expires when?
It expired April 27.
Okay, and so might we, June what?
We can do a renewal for a certain period of time until we are able to get a better understanding and be able to move forward and award this contract.
So maybe we ask for a, a 30-day extension to the existing contract?
We can.
And then we, we can bring it back at June 9th. I'm not opposed to that. But I think this is a very good conversation to have about these changing standards. However, because we are the entity buying the service, and if they want to do business with us, we can ask for these new, new planning, uh, items to be met. But when these site plans were approved, they were in compliance.
So, so the question that I would ask is, in the RFP, where there are certain standards that both companies had to adhere to, and if so, were they, did they meet the criteria? Did they both meet the criteria? And if so, I, I'll go back to Mr. Zorn's point. If they met the criteria that we set forth, why would we make them come up to a current standard? I understand that things have changed since, was it the 1970s? But I'm just trying to understand the process, which is why I think we need to table this
For that reason, yes.
to get some additional information.
Just for that.
And with, I think it's the right time. Even a 30-day extension wouldn't get us to our next meeting.
Well, are they working on an extension now? It doesn't appear that they do, so we should be able to do business as usual till we meet. You don't have one now, right?
No, ma'am.
So, so, so they don't have to, so based because we don't have a contract now, they don't have to agree to any of the prices? Is that correct?
Correct.
Well, that'll help us choose.
And just to answer, under Section 4, 4.2 of the specs, it actually states, "The location offered must be in compliance with the city's zoning orders and meet the following criteria and provide supporting documentation." So they did have to show us certificate of occupancy, along with proof of ownership, have no outstanding City of Southfield, Michigan code violations. Be able to provide a minimum of 25 parking spaces for public access during vehicle auctions, provide complete information such as a drawing indicating where exactly the spaces are, or a listing that details the number of spaces and where they are located.
And both meet all of that thus far?
Yes, ma'am.
Both?
Well, no. So, they both have code violations, and this is actually...
I'm not saying code, I'm talking bid.
Oh, these were in their bids.
And so they all meet those, our bid requirements?
Until we found out from code enforcement that they had the violations. So actually it's gonna lower their score.
But they both had, you're saying they both had code violations?
They both have code violations.
Okay, they both have code violations, but one's getting the contract and getting time to approve, where the other's just out the game altogether.
And that, that's the question, did the code violations lower...
They lowered the score for both of them.
They lowered equally, or depending on the code violations?
So, code violations, um...
They were pretty much both equal till you got to...
Yes, it's just, one has a little bit more, it's not gonna really substantially lower it, but they both had code violations. I'm gonna be, and they know this, these are the specs that they signed off on.
So, the, the big, looking at the scoring sheet, the biggest issue was pricing?
Pricing.
Using the ratio of points formula. Right? Other than that, they're essentially equal. By point eight points, everything is equal, except for the pricing.
Yes.
Okay. So whatever the code violations were, essentially...
They're point eight difference. If you take out pricing, they're just point eight difference.
Point, yeah. So, but...
So I would like to know, that's why I would like to table to know more about these violations, because they're so close. Just to, and I, I know that there's been some preliminary discussions, but not for all of us, and that's why...
And also, do we have all the information?
What information are you looking for?
I just, ma'am, just wanna speak here today, does he have additional information? Or do, is there more that you have? I don't know.
So, there's a clause in our RFP process that council has been made aware of as well last week, that until the bid is awarded, anyone who is responding to the RFP cannot essentially speak with any elected officials. There, that rule is in place to, and I'll let the attorney speak, but it's, it's to keep the scoring and keep the RFP process neutral.
I just, I just remember, you are the ones that are making the final decision, and staff members are involved, so there are supplemental instructions, so that it doesn't look like there's unfair influence. We look at it straight for what's in the RFP, so that's why I advised
Right.
earlier, and as you see now that you're discussing it,
Okay.
that gives a fair chance to both sides. So you have all the information that...
Yes, ma'am.
You have all the information.
I just remember before, before I got on council, it was a big deal between the two towing companies, and Quality came forth and started talking about some issues, and next thing I know, Ross Towing didn't have the contract anymore after that. So, I mean, and, and I remember Quality coming forth from speaking, so, you know, I do remember that.
So actually what I can do is at the next meeting, give you a historical, what happened in 2022, and was what we have right now, so you can have a comparison between the two during the discussion to see, as you stated, because historically Ross did have a contract until '22, and then there, my understanding that there was a difference in the, in the amount, and I did look at that historically, Quality did come in lower than Ross, and I can present that to you at the next meeting.
Yeah. And, and the other thing that I think we always have is, with the towing, especially when there's accidents in the roadway, I know that our first responders have to essentially call one, a company to come and, have, did we speak with our first, our fire chief or our police chief?
So, police did give a reference, and I believe I sent that out. We reached out to all their references, which would have been the state police, Lathir Village, I think Farmington Hills gave a reference for Ross, and the police department. In that way, Southfield Police Reference is weighed in that.
Okay.
So, one other question.
Councilwoman Haynes has the floor.
Does, I mean, just out of curiosity, if, if I were a company and I wanted to see somebody bidding, I can FOIA the information from the prior year and see pretty much how it goes, and they can look at that and kind of do their bid on it. That kind of can happen too, can't it? So they can kind of like come within the range of that?
Okay, so when I was deputy clerk, we did have that. I specifically remember receiving FOIA requests regarding towing services at least for two years. So that's also why I can give an in-depth evaluation between the two, because I did look at those FOIA requests when I was a deputy clerk. So I definitely can, that on occasion happens, where you have companies that do FOIA the bid specs, as well as their responses, as well as whatever else they may decide that they want to FOIA. And then the clerk's office will work out with the department purchasing, and we will work with legal.
We just wanna do things right. That's the main thing, we wanna do, we wanna be fair, we wanna do things right, we wanna be above the boards, and I'm sure we're gonna do it.
Councilman Brightwell?
Okay, I'm just trying to catch up. Do we currently have towing service within the city?
Yes, sir. As of right now, Quality is still towing.
That's, that's, that's based on an extension of, of an expired contract? Is that correct?
It has not been formally extended, sir.
It has or has not?
It has not, sir.
So they're doing this on good faith? We, we have this, this company is towing based on good faith?
Well, for the city, as of their last contract, Quality does not charge the city for any of their towing. They only charge city-operated, excuse me, owner-operated vehicles at this time.
Yeah, I know, I'm, I'm just trying to, we, we have this bid in Southfield for a reason for fire, and, and, but I just wanna make sure, if something happened, we have this service available to the individuals who are, who needs it. People who are in accidents, or our fire and police need something moved. So we have that service available right now, based on the extension with the existing tow company?
No. There's no extension. They are working on good faith, is what she said.
Okay, it's good faith then?
Yes, sir.
So, when, what would, what would actually resolve this, and when will it be resolved? This issue?
We're gonna bring it back at our next, at our, hopefully at our next committee of a whole meeting.
Okay.
Which is our next meeting.
Okay. So, is there... And this is probably for the attorney. Is there any liability, in or liability for the city, for not having this type service in, in place?
I can't answer that right now, but I will say that we should follow the recommendation as Councilwoman Hope said to review it.
Say that again, please?
I said, I cannot comment on that, because I don't have all the information, there's a bid still pending, so, right now, as has been requested by council that's here tonight is to review it, to follow up, and then from that point, we make a decision. But I can't comment on, is there liability? We just follow the bidding process as it's been presented, and council, right now, wants to postpone this, and so I'm assuming there'll be a motion to postpone it to the next meeting, and then administration and purchasing and legal will review everything together.
Okay, all right. So, um... There will be, by the time our next committee of the whole, there will be activity from this point to that point of being things being resolved, and we will have something to vote on at the next committee of the whole meeting? Okay. All right, well, thank you.
Counsel, any other questions on this item? All right, so we will see you in a few weeks.
Okay.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next we're up to our public hearing and site plans. Our first up is PSLU 25-0001, a special use request by Atha Gapi to demolish an existing gasoline service station and construct a new gasoline service station, convenience store with alcohol sales, and a carryout restaurant at 27050 Loser Road.
Thank you through the chair. This is an existing gas station, it's stated, located at the northeast corner of Loser and 11 Mile. It's a complete tear-down, rebuild. Site is Zone B3, which is consistent with gas stations, and it is also consistent of future land use for local mixed use. Now, they are requesting alcohol sales, carryout restaurant, as well as auto mechanic in the site. We, anytime we have proposed retail alcohol sales, we like to show a map of the existing facilities. The, I also like to point out that this is regulated by the state based on population. So retail on-premise bar is different than the off-premise liquor sales of beer and wine. There are 77 allowed per our population, there have been issued 53. There are 22 available, with two being allocated to date. Existing conditions, landscape site plan proposed, they're straightening out the canopy, enlarging the convenience store, gas station, mechanic shop. They have secured easement for additional parking on the bank site, the former bank site to the north. We also, as part of our condition, based on council's comment at the study session, they will locate any overnight vehicles that are being worked on behind the bank site, so they'll be out of view. They have reduced the amount of waivers and reduced the extent of the waivers through our site plan review process. They will be constructing ornamental fence brick piers and landscaping, not only on the proposed gas station site, but to the north on, on the property, the former banks, to tie in both of those developments. This is a floor plan of where their beer and wine sales would be. Exterior elevations, this really kind of shows the aesthetic look, with the mechanic bay shown on the right part of the screen. The convenience store and the grab and go will be on the northern part of the building. With that, I'd like to invite the petitioner up, if he has any additional comments they would like to make.
Good evening, my name is Heath Manawa.
Atha Gapi.
Can you give your address for the record, please?
27050 Loser, Southfield.
28124 Orchard Lake Road, Farmington Hills.
Thank you. So you've seen the presentation, anything you'd like to add? Do they want council to be aware of before we open up the public hearing?
I would just appreciate working very well with the planning department, and coming up with the site plan, got great circulation going on with the property now, and we're here to ask, answer any of your, any of your questions.
If I could, through the chair, can, again, can you speak about the auto mechanic shop?
So currently, the site consists of a retail store, car wash, and two bays of auto repair. So that's currently in existing use today. So our goal was to demolish the building, construct a new building, and organize a site. So what you're gonna see on the south end of the building is the mechanic bay location along Loser Road. There's two, in today's industry, you're only invited to the mechanic shop via appointment, so you can't just drive in. So we have the two mechanic bays that are shown on the site plan, with one additional bay for emergencies. People have an emergency tire or something like that. But the two cars that you see on the southwest, southeast corner, there, those two cars are for customers to be able to park in. There's a little lobby, right, adjacent to that, where the customer can walk in and say, hey, I got a problem with my car. So the site is more organized now, so those two spaces are allocated for people to come in and, you know, present their problem, and they'll get the consultation. But, and the rest of the parking is for customers. We, we also own the property to the north, which is not shown here, but we do have a site plan of it, where we allocate 19 spaces, which are not feasible, let's say, for future retail for the old Comerica Bank. So we use those for employee parking slash any other type of, you know, like auto mechanic bay parking. So you see the highlighted areas, those would be for the store employees, and mechanic employees, and the rest of employees. And like any additional, if there is any, the mechanic now just takes on two cars at a time, and, you know, they don't buy a point, there's no way that in the world they can get more cars in there right now, so.
Okay.
And through the chair, can you describe your grab and go business that you're adding?
Yeah, so, so the, the hot food, we call hot food grab and go. It's prepared meals, and there's some warming cabinets in the front where people come in, it's like really fast, quick, basically grab and go. There's no sit-down or anything like that.
Anything else, Mr. Crowe?
No.
Okay. We will have a public hearing, and we'll call you back up afterwards to answer any questions that may come up.
Thank you.
All right, so this is a public hearing for PSLU 25-0001. We just gave the presentation. Anyone willing, wishing to speak on this special use request can come up and speak. You will have three minutes. Please give your name and address for the record.
Hello again. I would like to ask the business a question, if I can, and to this council and to this mayor, how approximately, how many alcoholic sites do we have here in Southfield already that are selling, like liquor stores? How many businesses do we have in Southfield already that are selling alcoholic beverages?
We'll answer after, after you speak.
Because that's very concerning to me. We just heard earlier about the rash of gunshots, and I've called numerous times about gunshots in Southfield. So, I'm just wondering, to curb crime here in this great city of Southfield that we're planning to have and to be, what are we really saying, and what are we really doing? Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this item? All right, see no one else? The public hearing is closed. I will address that, Ms. Greer, that when the council first decided to allow gas stations to sell alcohol, we reached out to the, to our police chief, Chief Barron, and he spoke with other cities, and they... with other cities and they told him that there was no correlation to gas stations selling alcohol to an increase in crime or anything else. That doesn't mean it can't happen, but we have not seen it happen since we've changed our ordinance. Because that was a concern that we had and we have to go by what our police chief studies and looks at from other police chiefs in the area. On the board, on the TV screens, as well as behind me, it does have the list of licenses, as was mentioned by our city planner. Currently, there's, there's two different types of licenses. Some don't, some of them never have to come to the city council. A store like Meyer, grocery store that sells beer, wine, liquor, because those are allowed by right, do not have to come to the city. We specifically asked that gas stations have to come to the city council because it gives us an opportunity to look at their site and allow them to clean up their site should we, should it be warranted. We can ask them for different things as they ask for a liquor license. In this particular area, there is a, I want to say CBS across the street that sells alcohol, there's Family Dollar, I know that there's a Jewish bookstore that sells kosher wine, but those did not have to come to the city because they are allowed by right. Even, even a liquor store, if it wanted to open in the city, does not necessarily need to come to the council for, for approval if it meets certain criteria, meaning it's far enough away from a school or church, things like that, it does not need to come. But on this, on this slide that is up on the screens, as was stated, Southfield is currently allowed for off premises beer and wine. They're allowed, we are allowed 77 licenses based on our population from the state and we only have issued 53. Off premise liquor license, that's liquor does not include beer and wine, there's 26. And then on premise, like a bar or retail, we are allowed 51 and we've only, and we've issued 48. Now you can also have a, a restaurant or a retail facility that buys a liquor license from another entity within the state and brings it to Southfield. And again, depending on where they're located, may never need to come to the city council, they're just allowed to approve it because they are, it's, it's allowed, it doesn't need any special use, special land use. And I don't want to belabor the point, but I think that, you know, there's, there's things that we can control and when we can't control them, that's where we find ourselves this evening, asking for a special land use. I will, I will also say that, I'm sorry, I lost my train of thought, but city planner, you want to?
Yeah, just when council considered allowing liquor sales and there was a very deliberate discussion, many of our gas stations were existing nonconforming because they were built either prior to the city or before zoning ordinance compliance was taken more seriously. And the tradeoff was to remove and eliminate all outdoor sales, outdoor storage of ice chests, vending machines, a lot of things that were impeding barrier free access. We looked at site compliance issues, landscaping, pedestrian connectivity, and so part of the tradeoff was that if a gas station wanted to add the liquor and beer and wine sales, that they had to be in full compliance with today's standards. We also made it a special land use to give the public an opportunity to come and comment on those, that we don't have under traditional retail off premise sales. So those were some of the reasons we made those, this a special land use consideration.
And the other thing I wanted to mention was, when, when these gas stations are selling beer, wine, liquor, things like that, it's not a full service liquor store. They have, it's essentially grab and go, they're, they're not the, you have a much larger selection at some of these stores, it's not, they're not offering the same selection as, as what you would find in a, even in a Meyer. Meyer has a much larger selection or a dedicated liquor store has a lot more of a selection. These are very, I'm running in, I'm getting, I'm getting gas, I'm on my way home, I'm getting gas, I'm going to run in, rather than having to drive to another location, I'm just going to grab something, that's the same idea between the carryout. It's just grab and go, so much like a 7-Eleven, you just grab in, grab a hot dog, grab, grab a snack. So that's, that's what they're trying to offer and that's how they can, that's one of the ways that they try to stay competitive within, within the market. We had a petitioner, I want to say last year, who said that their sales have declined by 50% because more work from home, more EV cars, and so we're just trying to help, as you'll see later on when we do a zoning text amendment, we're doing what we can to try to help some of the owners, but as Mr. Crowe stated, this also allows us to look at the site and do any additional site cleanup that would be helpful for these businesses. But I'll call the petitioner back up and if council has any questions, Councilwoman Hoag?
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't have any question, but I was actually going to say some of the things you already stated, I'm going to try not to repeat them, to Mrs. Greer. We hear you and it's not that we are in support of increased drinking or crime, but there's just no correlation to crime and stores selling liquor. And two, as the president mentioned, this is just a way of how businesses are being crafted and created these days, where it's all come to a one stop shop. And so we have to be willing to compromise and meet, because we don't want to lose that business, especially on that corner. So we have to, we have to deal with how businesses are changing today where you have a lot of one stop shop. And some of the gas stations that offer these, in my opinion, look better than a lot of the liquor stores themselves. You don't have the signage of liquor everywhere in their windows and things of that such. So I think that a lot of the gas stations you'll see, and you won't even know unless you're going in there yourself to purchase it, and where we've been, allow other businesses to, to move in this fashion, they've been successful and we, at least I haven't heard any complaints from the neighboring residents or anything. So it's not that we're trying to create a, a city full of liquor stores, that's not the case, but where we know it's a part of today's society and it's a way of being, I think for me, I just want to make sure that it's in the most classy business that we can, where again, I don't like to see signs of liquor everywhere. You, you know where you're going to go purchase it and that will, that will sell on its own, you don't need to do all that advertising. So I welcome the improvements that they're going to offer and I think it'll be worse if we were to lose them. That corner is coming back and we would like to continue to support it. We've lost the bank behind it, but they're going to expand into it. And so I just want our residents to know that it's not a matter of us trying to create a liquor city, but rather just work with our business community and work with our residents who will frequent here for those products, so, thank you.
And the most important part is they actually have a service, two, two and a half, one for emergencies, right?
You don't find that, you don't find that often, yeah.
Service bay, which is a lot easier than, you know, driving out to other cities or to your dealership, which is usually more expensive.
If I could through the chair, just, approximate how much reinvestment to all in is this project?
The total investment is one and a half, about a million and a half dollars, because we are cleaning up the site, we are eliminating one of the driver poachers. We are making one of the driver poachers a lot smaller to make it so much safer for vehicles to ingress, egress. We talked about the development, we're going to talk about the services of the station and we urge us, some of the residents, to go there and watch and see how the customers interact with owners or the cashier or the employees, they're like family. So this place is not just a liquor store. I mean, if you look at the floor plan, you'll see we have a kiosk or a counter for fruits and vegetables and we have another island for salads and sandwiches and things like that. So we're offering a lot more than just liquor that, you know, liquor just pops out, but, and again, it's the service that the Gappys provide on that corner. Every person that walks into that mechanic, they trust him with that vehicle. And like Mr. Crowe just mentioned, you ever take your car to a dealer, you're two weeks and this guy says, well, let me see what I can do to get you in, out of here in a few hours, you know, so it's that service is more important than what we see that liquor being implemented into this whole entire development.
Yeah, thank you. And if I just could, as a follow up, I, it's not a specific site plan condition, but this is a special land use. They're investing one and a half million dollars. If you think about the dozen gas stations that have come in and let's average about a million dollars of reinvestment, I've also said that I see this as the future neighborhood store, as, as the diesel consumption gas goes away, these are going to transition to neighborhood stores. And I believe this is only one of two auto mechanic that's affiliated with the gas station out of our 37 gas stations in the city. So you got to kind of step back and look at, at the big picture here.
I just wanted to add, when we talked in our study session, I'm going to hold you to it, where we don't see a lot of the autos that are being worked on sitting in that parking lot, but I know that in other communities, you see where they've actually turned it into a sales lot. And I mean, I'm not saying that would be the case, but it's just that many cars there and so I'm going to hold you to it.
Right.
To please move them and not make it take up all your parking spaces, but I wish you all the best, thank you.
And through the chair, to Councilwoman Hoag, if you see item H, 8H?
I just wanted to put it on record.
Yes, we made that a condition, based on your comment.
Thank you.
As well as the EV charging spaces.
Thank you.
They are on the plan, they just have to comply with our barrier free layout and that's an additional condition that we made.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Haynes and then Councilwoman Brightwell.
Okay, did, did you include any of the bike rack as well? I don't remember you saying?
Bike rack is a required requirement.
Okay, I thought you said that from the beginning.
Yes, we do have one.
Good. One of the things that I would like to say about it and to Ms. Greer, in the surrounding communities, we have larger gas stations, I won't name, that are really coming in communities sort of taking over space, if you will. And in our community, we have gas stations that have been committed to our city for a long time. I would rather, and I'm happy to see you all expand and do some of those things that would appear to be larger, on a larger scale, instead of having those people come in that haven't been here and haven't been committed to our city. So I think that's really great that you are reinventing, reinventing what you're doing to support the community. Not to say that we don't welcome business, but you have been here, you've been established and you're putting a lot of money into this. And it's unfortunate that we see some of the businesses that are leaving Southfield, but I'm happy to say, I'm grateful that you are staying and you are, you are doing a good job at recommitting and reinventing your space. And also, I'm also really high on landscape and grass. I hope that, I know it looks pretty good, but it'd be nice if you, you know, make it a lot more appealing to that corner there too and keep it that way. Unfortunately, I've always been one that would love a litter law, but people throw trash out, you know, it would just be nice to see, you know, that constant, you know, pick up a trash and cleaning up as well. And we did get the bike rack. Also, you're in a nice community neighborhood, it would be just my suggestion, when you open up, let the community know, you know, give them a heads up, say, hey, we're open, have an open house, we'll be glad to come out. Just let us all know, we celebrate businesses reopening and reconstructing and doing things, so just let us know about that and even let the neighborhood associations. If you have a good place, I'm sure they'll buy into it as well, you know, and keep it community oriented. Thank you so much for what you're doing and keep us posted on all the upcoming things. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Brightwell?
Yeah, yeah, Ms. Greer, when this, when this concept started bubbling up a couple of years ago, I, I made, I made a call to our police chief initially, and he happened to be out of town, but he and I had a very long conversation and, and he had mentioned to me what they had, a survey, obviously with the various cities surrounding us, and there was no market uptick, uptick in, in crime. So that was, one, one of the first things I did was to get our police chief thoughts on this concept as it was coming down, over December a couple of years ago. And so along those lines, and once that was satisfied, I realized that we have numerous constituents here in, in Southfield and we have a business community and I'm, I'm kind of proud of this segment of our business community. They are adjusting their business model to the changing times. And in automobile industry, there are things are changing and they are, and also, and numerous segments of societies adjusting to, to, to our society is, is moving. So with respect to this segment of selling alcohol, what I've noticed is that the businesses that will be doing it, they are modernizing their locations, they're seeing modernizing, upping, upping the appearance of the, of the locations. And that is also similar to what is happening in the, in another industry here in the city of Southfield. They, they, in, in modernizing their location, it's almost like a rodeo drive location with respect to the way things are looking at some of these locations, so. And I would like to disclose with this, with, with the gentleman, who, the business owners, please keep your business striving along those lines with respect to, to the appearance. And also, I know we will have a, what you call it, when, during the site plan, you had the police, they come out and obviously be, do, do a review of the location from that, from how things are, are set up. So, but I want to just sort of re, restate, I'm glad you guys are keeping up with, with your industry and that, that you are, and I hope you are, I hope you are successful. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Crowe, anything else before we?
Just, I recommend the resolutions above. I do want to just point out that your approval should be subject to approval of required waivers by the zoning board of appeals, the execution of the easement for the 19 spaces, and the hours of operation are listed above. Now liquor sales are controlled by the liquor control in the state. And then we added the items G and H under eight, proposed EV charging spaces to comply with plain departments EV charging barrier free policy, and vehicles awaiting service to be stored in easement based shared parking spaces behind the bank building.
All right, counsel, what is your pleasure?
Mr. President.
Yes.
I move that we approve PSLU 25-0001, the special use request by a Thir Gapi to demolish an existing gasoline service station and construct a new gasoline service station convenience store with alcohol sales and carryout restaurant at 27050 Loser Road with the planning conditions as stated.
Support.
Support.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Hoag, supported by Councilwoman Haynes, to approve PSLU 25-0001 as stated with the conditions. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next is PSLU 25-0003, a special use request by Mobile Southfield LLC to add a carryout restaurant to the existing gas station convenience store at 25826 Southfield Road.
So, again, through the Chair, they have previously received special land use as well as site plan. This is the addition of the carryout restaurant, which does require special land use approval. Existing site is B3, and is consistent with the future land use of local mixed use. They are in compliance with all the site plan requirements at the existing facility. This is the, some photos from the various street views, approved site landscaping plan, floor plan, and the proposed takeout is looking on the left of the screen. Existing building elevations will not change. And with that, I'd like to invite the petitioner to talk about the actual carryout restaurant and independent operator.
So if you can just give your name and address for the record, and tell us about the wonderful carryout restaurant.
Good evening, Andrew Atisha, 25826 Southfield Road.
Good evening, Clarice Jordan, 25610 Friar Lane, Southfield, Michigan.
Any?
Could you just talk about your proposed use of your business?
Uh, yes, so I operate the gas station over there on Southfield Road, and we want to make the, the site a one-stop location. We currently sell the liquor, beer, and wine, but, you know, good drinking comes with good food. And so I was lucky to run into Clarice here.
How's your day?
Oh, I was lucky to run into Clarice here, and we thought we can put something together, and she's bringing in her food. I think she can talk a little bit more on that.
Okay, so we currently have a restaurant, Lily Bells. We were previously in Southfield, however, we did move to Redford, but we do want to come back to Southfield and bring some of our offerings into the gas station location. This would be considered somewhat of a quick bite type of restaurant, so it wouldn't be the full restaurant, but there will be cooking on-site, such as our most popular things, menu items, catfish, fried wings, mac and cheese, those sorts of things, french fries, that kind of thing. So it would be a, a more, a faster type of thing, where people are coming in, and they can grab something, and then, you know, go. We will also have the cooler, where there will be smaller items, such as salads and things of that nature. So it would be, again, scaled down a little bit, but still have the offerings. We were very successful here in Southfield with, where we were before, so we want to continue to offer that, what we had, to our, to the residents of Southfield as well. So this would be considered a second location for us.
And you mentioned, when we had our discussion a few weeks ago, that some of the food is going to be prepared there? Or can you?
Some of the food is going to be prepared there, and some of the food will be, will come in as well, will be brought in as well.
Okay. Anything else to add before we open the public hearing? All right. So this is a public hearing for PSLU 25-0003. Each speaker will have three minutes. Please give your name and address for the record.
You know, being in the business for many, many years, health and life insurance, healthcare companies, doctors, nurses, and the like, I would just like to ask if you didn't consider originally about the health factors. I've heard about Chief Aaron, Gase, and recommendations, and other law officials, but has this council and mayor ever heard from the experts in the medical field about livers, kidneys, things of that nature? You know, I'm out in the community, and I'm all over Michigan, it's huge, and I like to talk to young people about their wellbeing. I know most of us in this room are not young people anymore, right? And so I still, to this mayor, to this council, people have a right, Councilwoman Brightwell, if they want to drink up everything, but do they have a right to take our lives after drinking, whether it be from a bar, a gas station, or what have you? I have a grave concern about the reckless drunk drivers that are here in Michigan, okay? So as far as health, yes, number one, top priority. Can we be healthier? Yes. What's driving healthcare costs? Thank you.
Joseph Person, Post Office 54037. Okay, I listened to all of this, the bottom line is that, you know, the store that was the gas station at 10 Mile and Telegraph, that's my neighborhood, and I've been knowing those guys since we bought that house 10 years ago, and no problems. Folks, a lot of us don't want this, we don't want that, and when you do the math, and I did it in terms of my Democratic club, my young people in there, as a matter of fact, Wednesday, we have our meeting, seven or eight of them are talking about, they okay, they're okay with the, what is it, the grab and go, they want a liquor store. First of all, most of us up here on this city council, I won't even say the age, but the point is, it's their time. It's going to be other people's time, our time is, is over, you know, for a lot of us, our time is over with. So I just think that people are coming here, they're preparing for the future. That, the gentleman that are here at 11 Mile, in, 11 Mile and Lasser, about 15 years, 10, 12 years ago, I had an issue that was there 2:00 in the morning, and they looked out. They looked out for my vehicle, for my vehicle, even though the situation that happened, they took care of it. So I'm not going to come and want to deny anybody for making money. We, as people in Southfield, stop, you know, picking and choosing. When we had the marijuana stores, you didn't, some people didn't want it, but they're here, they're going to be here to stay liquor, liquor, for most people know, that is the biggest lobbyist group in, in, in the world. You're not going to stop liquor, simple as that. I got a nephew that's a lobbyist for liquor in Washington DC. $285,000 is what he made last year lobbying. You're not going to stop it. All I say is be responsible. And to the people that do the drinking and driving, you throw the book at them, simple as that. If you, if you break into somebody's house, and somebody takes you out because you broke into their house, the same way I feel with the drinking and driving, if you take somebody out because you drinking and driving, throw the book at them.
Good evening, Council. Good evening, Mayor, Administration, and all the individuals here in this setting. I'm Earl Crum, Southfield, Michigan. I would like to say that I think it's a good combination for the gas station and the carryout. The young lady said that she was here before, and she wants to come back. I think that's a good deal for Southfield, and we don't, I know Big Boy, it's called Shoney in the south, they have a Friday seafood fest on Friday and Saturday in Alabama, and it's very popular. So I'd like to welcome the young lady back with the food, and I think it's a good combination and a good business idea for Southfield. Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak to PSLU 25-0003? All right, public hearing is now closed. Councilwoman Haynes?
Yes, I like the concept, and I like the idea. First of all, I'd like to say, in my neighborhood, same neighborhood as Mr. Person, we have a Burger King that closed. Up the street, two miles over, there was a Taco Bell that closed. Going further, what is it, 10 Mile East and West, it's going further, further east, we have a Rally's that closed. These are small businesses, and also chain stores, but they're closed. And they were once in Southfield, and we don't have them anymore. I mean, I was surprised to see the Burger King close. So to welcome a new business, we got to get it here, we need businesses here. And I like the idea, and I understand, I don't know why you moved out of Southfield, but I got a pretty good idea. Brick and mortar buildings are not cheap, and you really want to run a business, I understand, my husband and I were going to franchise a long time ago, and it is expensive. And for you to come up with a concept to work together, I think that is magnificent. You are back here in Southfield, you're selling something that people want, and a good thing about it is, nobody likes it, they don't come, but we already know what's going to happen with that. So I think it's an excellent idea, and we need to embrace more of this in our city. I'm from the south, we have small businesses all the way down the streets, that people just come in because they're in the neighborhood. We want to create this in Southfield, we need to do this, we need establishing businesses just to carry, get, come and go. When I get off the plane and I'm at home, I go to a store, just like yours, to buy my favorite food, and I'm looking for things like that, and we want that here. I welcome you here, I'm glad you're here, and I, and I hope that you all will continue to have a joint success in your business. Please let us know when you're opening up. Some of us up here would like to try the catfish and the greens, I, I enjoy that, and we look forward to that. And again, like I say, with the rest of them, get involved with your community, let them know what's going on, they'll help make you top of the list. Thank you so much for coming back in Southfield, we appreciate you.
Councilwoman Brightwell?
I guess I echo my colleague here, but we, we, you know, Southfield is business friendly, and obviously we have numerous constituencies, so we're glad that you're here, and obviously if you are ever, ever in need of advice or consultation, obviously you have the council and our, the city staff here, so thank you.
All right, Council?
Mr. President.
Yes.
I move that we approve PSLU 25-003, the special use request by Mobile Southfield LLC to add a carryout restaurant to its existing gas, gas station convenience store at 25826 Southfield Road, along with all of the planning conditions as stipulated in the resolution.
Support.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Hoag, supported by Councilwoman Haynes, to approve PSLU 25-0003 with all of the recommendations from the planning department. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to address a comment that Ms. Greer mentioned about, have we talked, you know, about what the alcohol could do to liver, and things like that. Southfield does have, we have a number of volunteers, we also have our city health officer, they run a program, I was trying to look up the official name, I can't think of the name, but it's essentially the Southfield, I want to say, Southfield Youth Prevention, where they talk about smoking, and drugs, and alcohol, and they have a lot of resources. So we are out there at, at the schools, at different events, giving out information about the dangers of different vices that people have. So we do, we do acknowledge that there are some health, that there could be some health issues if things are abused, if you will, and we do have resources, and we're out there educating youth and parents about some of those dangers. So we do look at that as well. Our last public hearing this evening is a proposed text amendment, PTZA 25-0001, to update permitted uses in the OS Office Service zoning district to include limited, limited retail and restaurant uses in certain areas.
Thank you through the Chair. The purpose is to prevent additional complementary relatively low-intensity commercial uses in the OS Office Service District to encourage adaptive reuse, renovation, and property maintenance of vacant and underutilized small office buildings in the city. We have approximately 1,000 parcels zoned for commercial, non-residential use. OS represents about 400 parcels. This district is dominated by small office buildings that are typically several decades old, but well-built. Due to changes in demand for the mound size, type, and location of office space, they have been struggling with vacancy and underutilization for some years. These vacancies and underutilization have led to a variety of issues related to illegal occupations, poor site maintenance, and deferred building maintenance. These buildings represent a latent opportunity to grow local small businesses and entrepreneurship by allowing them to act as incubators for a wider variety of uses. These potential local small businesses are more likely to be women and minority-owned, create opportunity to build generational wealth within the community, and to provide a local economic boost, as every dollar spent at local business circulates in the local economy approximately two to four times more than the dollar spent in non-local businesses. Other advantages is to offer greater flexibility for potential tenancy. Buildings that are fully occupied have positive cash flow, typically are better maintained and generate higher property taxes. We did add personal services in 2021, and hasn't caused any real issues, and has helped fill some of our available space. The OS is designed to accommodate various types of office uses, and we are trying to encourage adaptive reuse. So these would allow stores of generally recognized retail nature with a maximum gross floor area of 2,000 square feet. We tied the permitted hours of operation to what you would find typically in an office building or office use. Freestanding restaurants and carryout restaurants, drive-throughs and all that would be limited to a maximum floor area of 2,000 square feet. Exterior storage of waste grease is prohibited, waste grease shall be stored indoors through grease waste containment and interceptor systems. They are compliant with all applicable ordinances, and our department worked with the building official to come up with this. Again, we're trying to limit the size. Interior displays shall only be visible on the sides of the building facing public rights away. We want to be cognizant that many residential areas are located adjacent to these older OS service districts, which are indicated in light blue on the zoning map. Again, this is a way to try to be flexible and provide some options for business owners to get some positive stream of income without impacting adjacent property owners. With that, recommend you open the public hearing, and then I would be happy to answer any questions that council may have.
Okay. This is a public hearing for PTZA 25-0001, the proposed text amendment to update uses permitted in the OS Office Service zoning district to include limited retail and restaurant uses in- to include limited retail and restaurant uses in certain areas. Anyone wishing to speak will have three minutes. Please give your name and address for the record. All right, seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Council, do you have any questions? Mr. Mayor?
I just have a comment that I applaud the Planning Department and Planning Commission for putting this forward, as we do have a number of challenging properties in the city. And in the current business climate, I think it's important that we be as flexible as possible, at the same time, still keeping the character of our thoroughfares.
Thank you, Mayor. One example I gave you is some historic homes have been converted to office, but they would make a great venue for a coffee shop, or a small bakery shop, or sandwich shop. And we have many examples in our neighboring communities where a coffee shop has gone into one of these businesses. So we're hopeful that this will open up some opportunities for some small businesses and owners of these office service buildings to be a little more innovative with their tenancy.
Council, what say you?
Mr. President?
Yes?
I move that we approve PTZA 25-0001, the proposed text amendment amending Title V, Zoning and Planning, Chapter 45, zoning of the code of City of Southfield by amending Article 9, Section 5.103 to update the uses permitted in the Office Service zoning district to include limited retail and restaurant uses in certain areas.
Support? It has been moved by Councilwoman Hoag, supported by Councilwoman Haines, to approve PTZA 25-0001 as presented. Any further questions or discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. President?
Yes?
I move that we introduce ordinance number 1813.
Support? It has been moved by Councilwoman Hoag, supported by Councilwoman Haines, to introduce ordinance number 1813. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
I got a follow-up, I've got some follow-up information. The, it's, the program that I was referring to earlier is called the Southfield Substance Prevention and Education Coalition. If you have any questions, you can reach out to our Community Relations Director, 248-796-5130, and he can provide some information on that as well. Okay, next we're up to our council portion of the meeting. We have one expense.
Mr. President?
Yes?
I move that we approve travel expense report for Councilwoman Cruz.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Hoag, supported by Councilwoman Brightwell, to approve the travel expense for Councilwoman Cruz. Any questions? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. This evening, we'll start with Councilwoman Brightwell. Do you have any comments for council?
I have no comments, but I do want to amend a recommendation I made last week with respect to the Dingell Women's Veterans item. That, that item I indicated was open to all veterans, but it's only open to the, the women veterans that have medical service there at the Dingell in Detroit. So, but the thing of it is, most of the time we make these announcements, we realize a lot of people might not be veterans, but you will know a veteran or know someone that knows a veteran. So if you did pick up on the item last week about the, the baby shower for women, women's veterans at the Dingell Building, that will only open to the veterans who are being seen by the health services at Dingell. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Haines.
Yes, I just wanted to let the public be aware of the jazz concert. The Southfield Public Library has jazz and blues the third Wednesday. I think this time it has an additional one this month, but it's 6:30 to 8:30, and it's a minimal fee for members and for non-members. And also stay tuned to the upcoming summer series, which is June, July, and August. All of the concerts will be on the terrace and are free to the public. Anyone can come out to those. So we welcome you to come out and support the library and support the city. It's a nice occasion to bring your family. And check the library's calendar, the city calendar, and Facebook for all of the programs we have going on and all of the services. I continue to urge you all to read, there's lots of things going on that if you can't use, your neighborhood association can use, your neighbor could use, your friends or family. And congratulations to all of the 2025 graduates in the City of Southfield. I was able to watch some of the Southfield Public Schools acknowledgement of young graduates, and a lot of them are going to the University of Michigan and several schools where there are scholarships, which we are very proud of them. Just wanna congratulate all the students and their parents and family for all the hard work and support they put into these children. These are our future. We just had a gala this weekend downtown for Lawrence Tech, and it was amazing to see some of the scholarships that they are now awarding students. And I would encourage you to let kids know about it and take advantage of those. And I was also talking to City Planner Terry Crowe, where the program that he has for the summer, those kids are introduced to Lawrence Tech, and a lot of them eventually attend Lawrence Tech, which is one of the best universities that we have around in this country. So, and then right here in our city. We have a lot to celebrate, we have a lot to be grateful for, and a lot to be thankful for. And these are all helping to keep Southfield the center of it all and to keep us in good condition. Thank you all for supporting us, and have a good week, weekend.
Thank you. Councilwoman Hoag?
Thank you, Mr. President. I echo that what Councilwoman Hayes said about our students. Congratulations to them. The only thing I would just like to wish everyone a Happy Memorial Day, 'cause I don't think we're meeting before then, correct? So I'd like to, again, extend a Happy and Safe Memorial Day holiday, and especially to all those who serve. I'm not sure, I know in this, in this room, we have our own Councilwoman Brightwell. Thank you for your service. Chair Person, thank you for your service. Mr. Zorn, are you a serviceman? And whoever else is a serviceman, thank you for your service. That's it, Mr. Chair, I mean, Mr. President.
All right. The end of the month, Friday, May 30th, is the deadline to submit any photos for the photo contest. It's always a big hit. You get to look at the pictures that we hang up around City Hall. For more information on it, you can see the city's website. But you can also email those pictures to photocontest@cityofsouthfield.com. Also, wanna echo my colleague's sentiments. Congratulations to all of those graduates, all the way from preschool to college. And also wish everyone a Memorial Day, and thank you for, to those who sacrificed and gave their lives for, for service. Also, the, Councilwoman Haines mentioned jazz and blues at the library, but we also have Eat to the Beat. I know, I can't find any information on the website about that yet, but I know it starts next month. Mr. Crowe, do you have any? The third Thursday of every month in front of City Hall. Hopefully we'll be able to use our new promenade. That you see all the construction out there, that we'll have, we'll be able to utilize that with food trucks and music and everything else, and make that accessible to everyone. So, we'll have to make her talk about that. But other than that, have a good evening, everyone, and thank you for, for coming out. With that, I will turn it over to the mayor.
Speaking of Memorial Day, we have our annual Memorial Day program this Friday morning, starting at nine o'clock. Due to the construction out front, the program will only be contained in council chambers. But again, nine o'clock, our guest speaker will be none other than Police Chief Elvin Barron. This last Thursday, Friday, we had a very special visitor to the City of Southfield. Our own Salma Blair actress advocate came back to visit her hometown. And while she was here, she had a, held a luncheon with MS Yoga to support people with multiple sclerosis. The luncheon was held at the Weston Hotel, attended by about 50 people, was a benefit. And then Friday night, she was part of our vintage fashion show, our second annual, that raised about $6,000 for the Friends of Southfield Public Arts. This money will be spent on Nine Mile and our Nine Line project. And then finally, I wanna mention that the State of the City address is coming up. It'll be held, this year we're doing something different. It's not a luncheon, it's an afternoon reception and presentation from 2:00 to 5:00 p.m. at Lear World Headquarters on Telegraph Road. There will be refreshments following the State of the City address in the auditorium at Lear. Because of security concerns, corporate security concerns, this is a ticketed event. Tickets are $50, and they, there'll be no at-the-door entry. Everyone must be pre-registered. For city officials and elected officials, you should make your reservations if you're planning to attend through either Sarah Malali or Rochelle Friedman in the Business Development Office. And then, once again, as I've always done in the past, we will have a State of the City held in council chambers a week later on Thursday, June 12th. And this event is free and open to the public. If you are listening and wanted to attend the Lear event, the tickets can be purchased. They're $50, and they can be purchased through Eventbrite that, online. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Administrator?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have one item of business this evening. I am requesting that City Council adopt a resolution authorizing the Chairman of the Brownfield Authority, on behalf of the Southfield Brownfield Authority and the Mayor and City Clerk Authority, on behalf of the city, to sign an Estoppel Recognition and Subordination Agreement with Arbor Realty SR Inc. and Northland City Center. This document, the Estoppel and the Southfield-Northland Supplemental Development Agreement, contains certain representations regarding the current status, as well as provisions generally aligning with the provisions of the Supplemental Development Agreement, addressing the lender's protection in the event of a developer's default. The form, the agreement will, has been reviewed extensively by our city attorney, Dawn King, as well as the Grant Williams from Miller Canfield, the attorney who worked with us on the development agreement. So I'm asking council to adopt a resolution that reads, as resolved, as a revision of Amendment Number Two to the Overlay Development District Development Agreement and Second Amendment to the Northland Supplemental Development Agreement, collectively second amendments, and the execution of the Estoppel Recognition and Subordination Agreement in favor of Arbor Realty SR Inc. will facilitate the takeout loan. The request to revise the Second Amendment with Phase 1A milestones of September 30th of 2025 and execute the Estoppel, Northland, the Second Northland Development Agreement be approved subject to the following conditions. Both the Second Amendments will be, as the Estoppel SMDA are subject to final review and concurrence of the city attorney, and if the Second Amendments are not executed by the developer by June 10th, then such authorization shall be rescinded. The, it is further resolved that City Council authorize the Chairman of the Southfield Brownfield Authority, on behalf of the Southfield Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, and the Mayor and City Clerk, on behalf of the city, to sign the Estoppel Agreement, Recognition and Subordination Agreement with Arbor Realty and Northland City Center. David Dubikai with the Northland Project is in the audience, and I did ask Planner Crowe to stay just a few minutes longer. The event council had any questions? This will allow the original financing to be taken out in the next phase of financing to come in to complete the first two buildings. That's what is before you.
Council, any questions? The one question I would have is, once we do this, when can we expect those first two buildings to be open? It's a question that we're constantly getting.
Billion-dollar question. Good evening, council. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Administrator, Mr. Crowe. To answer your question, we plan on opening this summer. We've signed on the retail portion of the facility, close to eight leases. We have local and national tenants coming in. We have a good feedback with residential units required with the hospital coming in as well. We are on schedule to go live with units for rent and pre-applications June 2nd, and our plan is to open up towards the end of the summer.
Okay. And I know Mr. Dubikai has representatives in Las Vegas at the International Shopping Center Convention, our DDA Director, as well as our Business Development Director. As we have been for the entire time I've worked here, we've been represented at that trade show and interesting email exchange about the types of meetings that are happening. So far, it's very well received. The marketplace, I know you spoke to the Michigan ICSC chapter in April, and I heard very positive remarks from three, four people. And I know the marketplace is eager for this to move forward.
Yes, so we've had, we have some great things coming online. Outside of the retail in Greenfield, we have very high preliminary design efforts with a boutique hotel for a conversion of the old Hudson's building. We're working with two sports entertainment users on the, on the site. And our plan is also to start the next two buildings down Greenfield as well. This financing will allow us to essentially pay back the existing lender while rolling that money into the next two buildings.
And if people are interested in learning more about renting or leasing the apartments, who do they contact?
We have a phone number and online as well.
What's the website?
NorthlandCityCenter.com.
Okay. Thank you. Council, any other questions? Anything else to add?
That's it. If you adopt the resolution and...
Mr. President?
Yes?
I move that we approve the request for authorization to sign the Estoppel Recognition and Subordination Agreement with Northland City Center Two. Subordination, I'm sorry.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Hoag, supported by Councilwoman Brightwell, to approve the authorization to sign the Estoppel Recognition and Subordination Agreement with Northland City Center Two LLC. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you all. We'd love to have you out soon with this weather changing. It'd be great if everybody come toward the site. I think it'd be a positive impact for everybody. I understand where we are as well with the, with the development.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else for you, sir?
Mr. Zorn?
Anything else?
No, sir, thank you.
All right. Madam Attorney?
Just good evening, council. I have a request for authorization to defend the City of Southfield in the case of Tamaya Johnson versus City of Southfield. At all, it's Oakland County Circuit Court Case Number Two. At all, it's Oakland County Circuit Court Case Number 202521202. This is a lawsuit filed against the City of Southfield and a police officer. There was a vehicle crash, and this Ms. Johnson is suing the officer, saying that they were negligent when their vehicles were involved in the collision, and because the vehicle is owned by the City of Southfield, there's a second count alleging that the city is negligent also. She's requesting a monetary access of $25,000 against the city and the officer, and I'm requesting authority to take whatever action is necessary to defend the city and its agents or employees in this particular matter. And if you have any questions, you can contact me also, and I'll give you more information.
So.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Hoag, supported by Councilwoman Haynes, to authorize the city attorney to take whatever action is necessary to defend the city in the court case that was mentioned. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else?
No.
Okay. Madam Attorney, sorry, Madam Clerk?
Good evening. I just want to say tonight, congratulations. Congratulations to Bernie Middle School and Mr. Randy Scott, our local superstar, who took awards at the annual competition that's held at Cedar Point. For years and years and years, even since my children have been in middle school, we've been big winners, and our children have been able to display their talent for music, but also their discipline and behavior during this event. So, congratulations again, Mr. Randy Scott and Bernie Middle School. As far as clerk news, please contact clerk's office. This is the phone number, 248-796-5150. In regards to working the elections this year, we have two elections coming up, one in August and one in November, and we need election workers to make sure that we serve our public properly, because we know Southfield does get out and vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Planner, do you have anything for this?
Well, just working with the council to schedule a joint meeting with the Planning Commission.
Right. Anything else besides that?
No.
All right. All right, yes, it's on our, it's on our agenda. We, it's for our redevelopment ready certification, as well as just to have an annual touchpoint with our Planning Commission. We are trying to, to a joint meeting, city council and Planning Commission, we're looking at June 16th at 6:00 p.m. Counsel, do you have any questions? If you can make it, we hope you can make it. If not, we understand, as this is a non-pre-scheduled meeting in advance, but we just do need a motion to schedule the meeting so we can add it to the...
Mr. President?
Public notice, yes.
I move that we approve a joint meaning, meeting with the Planning Commission, schedule, and schedule it for June 16th at 6:00 p.m.
Support.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Hoag, supported by Councilwoman Haynes, to approve a joint meeting with the Planning Commission on June 16th, 2025, at 6:00 p.m. in Parks and Rec Building Room 115. Is that correct?
I believe so, yes.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. And we will, we're working on a draft agenda. We will vet it with you once we get input from our commissioners.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, anything else to come before us this evening? All right, seeing none, our meeting is adjourned.